Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Patricia.
Hello.
You wonder if you guys are ever gonna let me in?
That was my fault, I'm sorry.
We have a couple minutes yet, so we'll wait. I understand that Amanda McKinney, Commissioner McKinney may also not be here, is that correct?
I have not heard anything. Ryan, have you heard anything?
No, I haven't.
Oh, I had talked with her earlier this week and she indicated she likely would not be here, so that's why I'm asking. Hopefully we'll have a quorum.
Yeah, I mean, everybody else has stayed there attending and I haven't heard from Commissioner McKinney, but I'm happy to reach out if she doesn't join us here in the next few minutes.
Now, as long as we have a quorum, I'm not worried. Thank you, Victoria. We'll see if she comes on. I think we'll have a quorum even without her presence. Oh, here she is.
She's joining now.
Hi, I'm just confirming that I'm here and that you can hear me.
We can hear you, thank you.
Okay, good. I know Patricia knows this, I'm remote in Tacoma for a Washington State Association Counties Board of Directors meeting and I don't know about the wifi, so I am me, but I'm gonna go off camera.
Well, thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Commissioner Lindy.
Very good. I'm also remote, so.
You're at the same conference all day.
We are, actually, yes.
Well, hi, everyone.
Hello, Andre, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. It stopped raining and the weeds have stopped growing, at least today, so life is good.
That's great. We do have a freeze notice for tonight, though. If you have any sensitive plants out, pull them in again. We have another freeze.
Not good. Does Commissioner Anderson join us tonight?
No, he is not. I'll be chairing tonight, Commissioner Lindy.
Okay, very good.
And thank you, Councilmember Byers, for chairing.
Oh, you're more than welcome. Always my pleasure.
Councilmember Byers, I'm sorry, it's Dr. Atterbury. I was just chiming in for a second. I'm in the middle of a surgery. I'll be back when I'm done in about an hour or two, an hour and fifteen minutes.
All right, thank you, Dr. Filling, it's no way. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Bye-bye.
Okay, that's pretty impressive when you step out of surgery to do that.
Yes, I'm sure his patient is grateful he went back in.
I was gonna say, he knows good priorities.
That was awesome.
All right, well, I have 5:30. Should we get going?
All good.
All right, so I call together, excuse me, yes, I call together the Yakima County Board of Health meeting for May the 12th, 2022. And Mr. Ibach, can we have roll call and introduction of guests, please?
Okay, so the board chair, Commissioner Anderson, has informed us that he will not be able to attend tonight. So then we got our vice chair, councilmember Patricia Byer. Present.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm here.
Dr. Clary.
Here.
Commissioner McKinney.
Present.
Commissioner Lindy.
Here.
Councilmember Duval.
Here.
And then Dr. Atterbury also informed us that he will be attending late. For Yakima Health District staff, Andre Fresco.
Here, good evening.
Myself, Ryan Iback, Chase Porter.
Present.
Lilian Bravo.
Here.
Melissa Sixberry.
Yeah.
Sean McGee. Nathan Johnson.
Here.
Dr. Barge.
Here.
Jocelyn Castillo.
Here.
Victoria Reyes.
Here.
Okay. James Elliott.
Good evening.
And Sean McGee.
Here, good evening.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is a review of submitted public written comments. Are there any comments, Mr. Ibach?
There are no submitted written comments.
All right, thank you very much. And for his unfinished business, and it says none. Let's see, anybody has any unfinished business coming to mind? And not seeing anybody, we will move on to section five, which is new business. The first item is 5A, Board of Health interview process, and Mr. Iback, you're on, please.
Okay, so we do have three open positions for the Board of Health. One is the tribal member position. Another one is the consumer of public health citizen representative position. The other one is the other community stakeholder community or the citizen representative position. And we'll start with the tribal member. So we did send a letter out to the American Indian Health Commission to invite them to invite someone to start the process of choosing someone to be on our board, and so Andre, we'll give an update on that process.
Yes, thank you. Good evening to the board members and anyone who's joining. I want to thank you for allowing us to be part of the process of welcoming tribal representation. I sent an email to Vicky Lo, who's the executive director of the American Indian Health Commission. She's someone I've worked with in the past. I've also left voicemail at the American Indian Health Commission. I have not heard back either from this Lo or anyone at I A I H C. So we can continue to communicate, but we have not had any progress yet on their choices. And of course, that's theirs to choose to share with us.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fresco. Go ahead, Ryan.
Okay, and then as far as the other two positions, we have advertised those two citizen positions for thirty days. It did close at midnight last night. We received sixteen candidates submitted applications, letter of interest, and resumes. Two of those people, of those sixteen people, did request to be considered for both positions. So we do have six people for consideration for the consumer and public health position and twelve people there for consideration for other community stakeholder positions. So at this, so the time, as far as the timeline goes, is now we'll start the interview process with the intent that by the June ninth special meeting, so a little less than a month, that there is some names presented to this board to make a selection to push forward to the Board of County Commissioners for final final approval. So at this point, what we've done historically, when we've had board members, is we've formed a committee that kind of narrows down the field. And so at this point, we can have discussion on as far as what this board wants to do for these board members, for these candidates. And now, James, did you have anything in specific about rules that we need to follow as a board?
So a couple things. First of all, in terms of the sixteen people who have placed their information in, the Health District and Ryan and staff should provide this to each one of you, so you have all of their information. I don't, is there a timeframe on when you're intending to get that out to each board member?
Yeah, those will be going out tomorrow morning.
Okay, so according to the rules, we have a couple things that we have to pay attention to. Jocelyn, if you don't mind, can you pull up the rules that are not in full and final form as adopted by the Board of Health in its final form? That lack 24690. So if you can scroll down to what would probably be either your third or fourth page on this, these are the rules. Oops, okay, go a little bit farther. We want to get to, we go to 020. We're 020, and so keep going.
And Jocelyn, if you don't mind, when you do, at your leisure, could you expand it a little when you have time? Thank you.
So just as a quick reminder for the board, these are the rules that the Board of Health was required to prepare in order to assist local boards of health and county commissioners in the process of adding new board members to be compliant with 1152. These rules have not been in their final adopted form. It looks like they probably won't get that as a complete and final rule until July 1st, but this has been adopted. They just need to go through the final steps in the process, so it's fair for us to work off of them and use them. I've gone through sections of this before for you in terms of different areas. But tonight, we'll spend a little bit of time here. That's perfect. We might need to scroll down in a second, but we'll keep it right here. This is the recruitment process. That's where we are right now. After the recruitment process, there then becomes the selection and the appointment processes. Unless there are questions on those later, I'm gonna just sort of stick with this recruitment portion and kind of tie a couple pieces together. But basically, once the information has been brought in, which it is, it shall be disseminated to each one of you board members. And it lays out the process here. I'm focusing in on subsections five and six to start with because that's kind of where we are in this process. In subsection five, it identifies that the Board of Health may require the applicant to designate their categories. We did that. The candidates did identify their categories that they would apply for. And it also allows an opportunity for the Board of Health to consider applicants for any position for which they're qualified. So that's why Ryan identified there were two who have submitted to be considered under both positions. And that is available to you as a Board of Health to consider these individuals for either of the two positions that are open for those two people. In subsection six, you will see all applicants for non-elected positions shall be interviewed in a panel format by the local Board of Health, subject to the following, and it lays out an A, a B, and a C here. So the first one I want to point you to is actually part C. So in six, it talks about the interview process, but it says, "In the event of a substantial number of applicants, the local Board of Health may elect to interview a smaller number of applicants as long as the applicants interviewed include a diversity of expertise and lived experience." So I don't know what qualifies as a substantial number. It's not defined anywhere in here. We do have for the other community stakeholders, twelve individuals who are identified. I will leave that up to you as to whether or not that's a substantial number because if you determine that is and you want to do something in terms of interviewing and smaller number of applicants, you have that option to do. There is some flexibility here. I think the best interpretation is essentially to say we should have a panel format of interviews taking place. Whether or not you want to do something different, to have a nominating committee or something else, sort of whittle down the number of applicants, you have the flexibility to do that. If you believe that the twelve applicants, as far as the other community stakeholders can be done in an interview in a panel format that can be worked in a way of twelve people, that you could ask questions that you want, you can go ahead and do that. But there are options available for you. Unfortunately, the rules don't offer us more than what we see in section six right here. So I would argue that's good in one degree because it gives you some flexibility. But it's bad in another area because how do you determine what's a substantial number? How do you work through the process? My recommendation is that the board have a discussion now and doing it in an open public forum fashion. Have the discussion, figure out what you want to do as a board. If there are areas in which people are starting to go outside of their realm or people have questions, I can sort of chime in on that. But unfortunately, section six here is really what we're dealing with. We have to keep in mind, in the interviews take place, section, subsection A and B identify how it shall be done, which is a standard set of questions shall be asked, and follow-up questions can be asked in addition to that. But to that, I will leave it open to the board to have a discussion about how you intend to go. Commissioner Lindy, is that a question for me or just starting the discussion?
Well, a little bit of both, I suppose. So first of all, remind me, we had sixteen total applicants?
Yes.
And we had two of them that would fit into both categories. How many others fit into one or the other?
So, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, if you've got six consumers of public health, that means there would be four others in addition to these two that fit both categories, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So then you would have ten other people in terms of the other community stakeholders in addition to the two who fit both categories.
Okay, well, it's a, you know, it's a little bit difficult to know exactly before we've seen the applications, but it seems like it would be prudent that if we have, for example, ten candidates in that one category, we may not be interested in interviewing all ten. Depending on the qualifications, we may not be interested in interviewing all four of the other, although we may. So maybe we can, it might be something that we can do is once we've, I would think that you know, maybe one approach might be to look at the candidates and then once we've had a chance to look at them, maybe we gee, is there a way to do this outside of a meeting? I mean, just make a recommendation of how many, you know, who are our top candidates and who each of us respectively might want to interview and come up with a list by then and you know, together and collectively narrow that list down a bit. Just my thoughts, start the discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McKinney, your hand is raised.
Hi, I was thinking, actually, something along similar signs of mind that, you know, as a process, I think it's important for us each to have the opportunity to read all of them. I do agree, you know, substantial is very vague, so perhaps it could be something, and mindful of our open public meeting requirements, would it be something that would be allowable, Mr. Elliott, where we could agree that we would all review the candidates and then submit through email to Victoria or another designee, whether we were favor or not in favor for some reason of interviewing or just say, indicate the affirmative that we would like to interview this person and then simply make it a majority where if the majority of the health board members are indicating an affirmative desire to interview each individual candidate, then that, then they would pass through. Am I being clear on that or is that possible, James?
Yeah, so the tricky part is if you scroll it down a little bit farther, Jocelyn, if you could, to number seven. The language that's written here under subsection seven about the recruitment process being consistent with the OPMA. The struggle I have with the way this is written is the prior section allows the opportunity to elect to interview a smaller amount. But section seven says the recruitment process, which I think means all of this must be considered with the OPMA. So I kind of struggle with the ability, Commissioner, to make decisions about narrowing it down in an email fashion. That would be my concern.
Okay, so that's what I was wondering is that, so what you're really saying is that we need to come back together for another meeting and have at least a discussion or at least go on the record as saying I'm for or against interviewing this person and why?
Yeah, I wish I could give you a clearer answer on that. My only concern is if we basically, I think the idea here was to allow you the ability to have a discussion and narrow down what people that you would as a group want to then interview. You know, I mean, I don't know, again, whether or not ten to twelve people would fit into the substantial number or not. You know, if you had a hundred, that'd be pretty easy to answer, but is ten or twelve a substantial number? I don't know how to answer that. But my fear is if you do something where you have a group of people who are communicating with each other on a portion of the recruitment process that's not consistent with the OPMA, I think we open ourselves up to issues. So my recommendation, if you have the idea of narrowing it down, I think whatever narrowing down process you want to do should be done in an open forum.
So follow up real quickly, and I know, Dr. Clary, I can see his hand is raised, would then be we could receive them and then we could reconvene in an open public meeting, and at that time, Ryan could take like a roll call vote and we could say yes or no on each one if we want to interview, and then if a majority wants to interview, put them in a pool that way because that would be happening in an open public meeting.
I think that's an option. I definitely think it's an option for you, and I think in that fashion, I think you'd have the least likely issues related to the OPMA. And again, my only concern is if you've got something where decisions are being made about narrowing candidates down and are done in a fashion that's not in an OPMA or open forum issue, you run into potential issues and we don't want to do that. So that would, my suggestion, Commissioner, would be if you're gonna have that narrowing down, to do that in an open forum and to make that decision.
Dr. Clary.
So I think it'd be appropriate that we kind of establish some idea of a number that's appropriate for each position because there's sixteen this time, but the next time there might be forty-five. And I'd like to be reminded of what needed materials were provided by each of the members in addition to the application because that makes a difference in whether they're showing an effort to provide a cover letter, curriculum vitae, and their application in total, and also would give us enough information on paper to potentially then come up with a smaller group of candidates. So Ryan, can you remind us of what they are asked to provide?
Yes, so the advertisement asks to provide the the application, a cover letter of interest, and resume.
I wouldn't ask to mention as well, and I recognize this is something that we have dealt with in the past, that as we, as we know, part of 1152 was to embrace the idea of more citizen representation, and so not everyone will have the same background or even skill set in creating their history. So I do want to share that that's part of our process is to figure out how we determine each person's value on our board. So that will be, that will be a welcome complexity, actually.
Thank you, Mr. Fresco. I wanted to say just that I agree that I don't think I would eliminate anybody for those particular items. I think we're gonna be better off coming up with a reasonable number, what we feel comfortable in terms of interviewing and then be able to have an open meeting where we identify those who are interested in interviewing and those that we don't. One thought that crossed my mind is that we could interview the two applicants who are both interested in the same position for that position and then possibly interview the rest for the other position. I don't know how the, I don't know how the board feels about that. Commissioner McKinney, your hand is raised.
Yes, I was just gonna comment exactly what Director Fresco said, that I think that it would be the purpose of this is expand diversity of the board and especially with something as broad as the user of healthcare that I think that it would honestly be quite tragic if we decided to eliminate someone because they didn't know what a CV was or didn't have access to a computer to create a cover letter.
There's one thing I want to add for the board, though, and I appreciate the idea of having the discussion to determine if you want to interview a smaller number. My only concern with that is the timing of it and sort of trying to be able to meet the timeline that we're required to meet at this point in time. And my only fear, and I just want to port this out, I'm not trying to tell the board not to do that, but if you are gonna make a decision to have an interim meeting where you're determining whether you should narrow it down or not, the only question I would ask is sort of on a timeline standpoint, unless we sort of created a new meeting along the way, which we could. I mean, we could do a special meeting prior to our next one or something along the lines. But from a timeline standpoint, Ryan, can you help me out if we decided to do this narrowing to create a smaller number, and we did that in our next regularly scheduled meeting, where would that put us in terms of the overall timeline?
So the next regularly scheduled meeting would be May 25th, which is, would be just two weeks from yesterday. That would leave us, for interviews, it would leave us two weeks to do interviews.
That's pretty tight.
Yeah, so we maybe have to squeeze in another special meeting, possibly the beginning of next week to narrow it down and then we can start the interviews.
Councilmember Byers, I wanted to recognize that there are other members of the board that have hands raised, but that at some point, I wonder if we could share at least the historical perspective of what we've done in the past with the recognition that, if I made the recognition that James indicated that the rules have changed, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fresco. Mr. Duval, your hand is raised.
Thank you. So I've kind of just been listening. I want to make sure that I have this clear. The qualifications that were required in order for us to consider these applicants were an application, a cover letter, and resume. All the people that applied, did they all complete all three?
No.
I think, I think that would narrow down who we can interview, correct? And you gave a deadline. I think that we should only consider the ones that have a complete application. And then one thing that I do want to continue like we did with the health officer is do some kind of scoring matrix and then nominate candidates to be interviewed to move forward, either with a super majority or simple majority from the board. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Duval. Commissioner Lindy, your hand is raised. You're on mute.
You're right, I was on mute. Okay.
You're right, I was on mute. Okay, uh so just kind of thinking through the timeline here. Uh so we have uh the commissioners have our the our draft ordinance uh scheduled for a hearing next Tuesday, the seventeenth. And assuming that we can move that to resolution, which I assume would be the 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 following Tuesday, that would be the twentieth. So uh assuming, you know, that everything goes well, we should have that in place before the next meeting. Which uh which I think is is good. Um? And then um now? I guess the question will be, is there uh? Any kind of vote that has to take place by the Health Board to to uh to agree with the processes we put in place? I mean, it is in our hands to put it. You know, in place and I and you've seen you've seen the ordinance, so I don't think that, you know, you're going to see any surprises there. But I just wondering if there, you know, if the protocol dictates that before we uh? Actually select uh those uh people for interview, does there need to be an approval? Well, you don't approve the ordinance, but you you adapt, I guess you adapt the language for for Health District uh resolution or language in some manner, correct?
So the Board of Health will have to adopt a resolution related to your the B O C C's new? Uh Yakima County Code that will go into effect because it has changed what the prior Board of Health resolution was. However, if the question is whether that needs to be done before the decision related to the interviews, I'd say no. Because as I look at your uh the? New Yakima County Code that's set to be uh discussed in a hearing next Tuesday, the seventeen. There's nothing in there that changes the overall process related to the interview process. In fact? It looks as though the language that is chosen is consistent with portions of the new rules, so? With the requirements under your the new code from the county commissioners is that applications are forwarded to the members of Board of Health? That there shall be a standard set of questions based in an interview process? Um and that the recruitment process shall be consistent with the O P M A for R C W forty-two thirty, so nothing in your? New county code will need to have been adopted by the Board of Health as a resolution? Prior to a decision related to the interviewing process.
Okay, so then as a as a follow-up that to that, then? Um it seems like if if we're getting going to get the uh applications tomorrow, uh you know, or or sometime in the near future? We should have time to be able to review those and uh and come up with the decision, maybe, you know, maybe it is a, I I assume by by vote by the? Members of the board, which are the people uh of that have applied that we wish to um uh to proceed with an interview. And uh, you know, and I understand on one hand that um? We don't necessarily want to, maybe we don't want to preclude someone who maybe doesn't do the application quite right? To uh, you know, to be interviewed, I I but we'll just have to wait and see what comes our way. On on the other hand, um? I I kind of look on look favorably on people who can actually follow the directions. I kind of like that, so uh I guess we'll we'll see what we get. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh Commissioner McKinney, your hand is raised.
Uh yes, thank you. I actually have a concern about it regarding? Mr. Elliott, your opinion that are we able to create an additional barrier? According to the statute, it just simply the statute outlines who's eligible to serve. Is the Health Board have the ability to create an added layer of requirement for someone to serve?
Well, there and there's nothing in the rules that discusses how the uh decisions shall be made other than? WAC two forty-six ninety oh two five, which you're seeing now on your screen. It lays out the process for selection. So if we scroll through this, um it identifies what the board can assess when considering applications. So um we basically can walk through this and it sort of begins in? Let's see here, number four, subsection four, it identifies what the board should assess? When considering applicants for selection, and it sort of lays out some of the issues that are here that can be considered. Um number one, service, current past other local boards. B is whether the background meets the qualifications of the selected category, so that's not whether they followed particular? Rules, et cetera, about filings. But it's more which do they fit the category that they have applied for and obviously you'll have to analyze that. C is the potential conflict of interest. And then D, the demonstrated commitment to public health. And E, whether representing diversity. F, whether represents the geographic diversity of the community, so it lays out? Essentially, the things that shall be assessed. But it doesn't also preclude other areas. It just says these things? Assessed as part of your decision-making. So can the board decide to do something beyond these? Sure, absolutely. There I wouldn't say that there are limitations on it. But I think the argument could be made that, you know, if there are people who do have limitations in their ability to have a computer, et cetera. You know, you want to represent diversity and expertise in the community. You want to try and stay away from discriminating against too much of that, so I think you have some ability. I don't say that I wouldn't say that the rules lay out specifically exactly how you have to do it, other than telling you the things? You have to assess, which are found here in number four.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Uh, Mr. Fresco, please go ahead.
You've been waiting. Thank you, Councilmember. I was just gonna add uh to the uh? To the tone that uh? That James is setting is number five um discusses the local board of health shall assess whether the applicant identifies with a historically underrepresented community. So again, when we're talking about representation for people who may have been disenfranchised or inadvertently not had the opportunity to serve on boards like this? It it does at first blush conflict with the idea, as as James mentioned, that some people will have experience on boards. But if we're looking for representation, I think that that's something that we will have to assess as a board. I should say the board shall assess whether representation is the is the complete um consideration as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fresco. Do we have any other discussion? Do we uh, Ms. DeValle, your hand is raised?
Uh um I'm guessing maybe? What I hope to at least accomplish today is figure out, can we come to consensus consensus on how many people we want to interview? I think that's going to be important because we have such a small um timeline to get this done.
Do we have any uh any recommendations in terms of numbers of persons? Any thoughts on that?
Well, I think there are going to be about like uh an hour-long interview, um and then we have to think about our schedules. Um and you know, doing too many, all sixteen or twelve or four, um? I don't know, we just need to be considerate of the time.
Thank you, Ms. DeValle. Uh Commissioner Lindy.
You know, I think that's a fair uh, there's a, that's a fair comment. I mean, I certainly don't want to interview sixteen people for these positions. I just, I I hesitated giving a number simply because I really don't know? What kind of uh, you know, what are the qualifications of the candidates we're looking at, but I'm very comfortable saying that, yes? We need to whittle that number down and and probably fairly significantly.
Thank you. One of the things I'd like to share is that I sit on the nominating committee for the city of Yakima right now. And uh we did some interviews for the um? Planning Commission, which is one of the uh more authoritative boards, commissions in the city. And we asked uh the same, we asked everybody the same questions. There were, I think, six questions and we did it in half an hour. I'm not sure that we would require a full hour for every applicant in terms of an interview. I think that might help shorten the process as well. So do we have any uh at this point, we could, I would entertain a motion if somebody has an idea? Then we can work on the motion or? What are the thoughts we have? Commissioner McKinney?
I I think I would make a motion that we have a special meeting next week uh to come together and determine? Uh if we are gonna, the number of folks that we're wanting to interview based off of having everyone had the chance to review all the applicants.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Thank you. So we have a a motion by Commissioner McKinney and a second by Commissioner Lindy to hold a special meeting next week? To determine uh how many applicants and possibly who those applicants will be. Uh in the meantime, um so I'm sorry, that's the end of the motion. Would you like to defend your motion?
I don't know, I think it's pretty clear.
All right, uh Commissioner Lindy, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, no, I'm just looking at my calendar next week to see what.
What do you know, you also like to address the motion? Uh Ms. DeValle, your hand is raised. Would you like to address the motion? No, um Dr. Clary, your hand was raised. Would you like to address the motion?
Yes, I do. Sorry. Uh so I would like to um speak against the motion. Um I think right now we're in a really good position where we? Are not going to be influenced on the applicants. All sixteen might be amazing people. Uh we might want to interview all sixteen people. Right now we have the opportunity to um remove? That from um? From what needs to get done. I I just, I I think it, once we start looking at all the applicants, we're gonna? Um have a harder time deciding how many we want to uh select for our interview process.
Thank you, Ms. DeValle. Um Dr. Clary, I'll get back to you. Did you have anything you wanted to speak to the motion?
I I think it'd be, I agree with uh Ms. DeValle. I think it would be reasonable to go ahead and and set a number now because this is? Going to apply to additional elections in the future where we won't be reviewing? Um all the letters uh ahead of time uh to come up with a in the individual number. And um I'll just throw out there, I think six, uh reviewing all the qual occasions and all the materials from all the applicants? And then choosing six to interview for each position would be a a generous number and a a reasonable use of our time.
Do we have any other comments regarding the motion? Commissioner McKinney?
Uh, I would say that I don't disagree with setting a number. I think it would be a separate motion. I think the motion is that we are agreeing that we need to have a special board meeting uh so that we can? Discuss who, and I think there could be discussion, a separate motion um and create a definition, so when we do convene, if we do convene next week, how many we want to choose.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further questions, Ryan, would you call a roll for vote, please?
Okay, so? The the motion is to uh have a special meeting next week to determine the number of applicants to interview and who to interview. So if you're, is that, okay. So if you're in favor of the motion, please state yes. If not, please state no. Dr. Clary?
No.
Fisher McKinney?
Yes.
Fisher Lindy?
Uh, yes.
Dr. Adderbury's not on yet, okay, um? Uh, Councilmember DeValle?
No.
And Councilmember Byers?
Yes.
Agreed to.
All right, so motion passed, it's ready to, thank you, everyone. And so it's my understanding then that as we set up a time for a special meeting next week, we'll be? Also then, at that time, we can take a motion in terms of how many people. But in the meantime, that the uh board members have homework to do, we'll be receiving information from Ms. Dryback tomorrow on all the applications and? Will need to take the time to make sure that we read those. All right, we probably need to set up a day and a time? For that special meeting next week.
Councilmember Byers, I was hoping we could recognize uh Councilmember DeValle.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up again. Go ahead, please.
Sorry, I was under the impression from what uh Commissioner McKinney just said was that we could narrow, still narrow down that number. Um I just think that? It'd be be wise, so um I really liked uh? Dr. Clary's recommendation if he was willing to make that motion. We could take care of it right now.
Actually, either one of you could make that motion, Ms. DeValle, that's correct.
Oh. So then I would like to make a motion that we uh interview six candidates for each uh category that we're selecting uh to serve on the board.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dr. Clary. So we have a motion by um Councilwoman DeValle and a second by Dr. Clary? That we um limit the number of interviews to six person, six persons for each position. So we have motion and a second. Ms. DeValle, would you like to defend your motion?
Uh just like uh what I was saying before is that we have a very short time? That we um have to interview these applicants, so I just think it would be wise if we? Knew ahead of time, again, uh we haven't seen the applicants and I feel like? Once we, once I see everyone that took the time to apply, and I want to take this time also to say thank you for everyone that that took the time to apply? Um that I'm just going to be blown away by everybody. I'm going to want to interview everyone.
So, thank you, Ms. DeValle. And Dr. Clary, would you like to speak to the motion?
I I just think we probably should avoid additional extra special meetings that have to bring all the the staff together. We've got a lot of? Interviews to schedule in the near future and? I think um just out of respect for all the staff and and the other members of the board, it would be nice to just settle this today.
Thank you, Dr. Clary. Commissioner Lindy, your hand is raised.
So just uh just a point of clarification, so are you saying that we're going to interview six for each position or are you saying that we're going to interview no more than six for each position?
Well, the motion was six for each position.
Yes.
But the reality is we may not have that many applications in the future, so um it should be a maximum or no more than six.
Well, I'm comfortable.
We amend the motion.
Six, uh I'm I'm comfortable with the idea of a maximum of six. I mean, we might? I mean, I don't, obviously, none of us know. And I, it could be that we look at this and say there's no more than three we want to interview for one position and maybe five for the other, I mean, we just don't know.
Is somebody making a motion to amend? Their previous motion?
I'll make a move and to amend my main motion? To make it a maximum of s- six applicants to be interviewed for each position.
So we have a motion?
I will, I'll second the amendment.
Thank you, Dr. Clary. So we have a motion to amend to change the previous motion uh? To to add the maximum of six persons to be interviewed for any one position. A motion by Ms. DeValle and a second by Dr. Clary. Would you like to address your motion, Ms. DeValle?
No, I think that's pretty clear.
Dr. Clary?
No, I'm fine with that.
Anyone else like to address the motion? Our hearing, and I'm sorry.
I'm comfortable with it, that's all. Yeah, I I I like.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindy. Ryan, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Okay, so the uh the vote is for the amendment of adding the maximum of six candidates.
Correct.
So if you're in favor, please state yes. If not, please state no. Dr. Clary?
Yes.
Fisher McKinney?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Councilmember DeValle?
Yes.
And Councilmember Byers?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Now, motion passes five to zero. Thank you. So now we need to have our amended motion to be voted on, so would you read the total motion then? Ms. Dryback, please.
Yes, the motion is to interview a maximum of six candidates for each category for Board of Health.
Thank you.
And if you're in favor, please state yes. If not, please state no. Dr. Clary?
Yes.
Fisher McKinney?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Councilmember DeValle?
Yes.
Councilmember Byers?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Board of Health members. I think that was a? Uh a good amendment. All right.
Councilmember Byers, may I share something for for clarification?
Please do.
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize that we do have applicants who have um expressed their interest to be considered for both positions. So we may actually not have, even if we were to have a mix, a maximum of six applicants for each position, you may not have a total of twelve, just for the purpose of not confusing people.
Thank you, Dr. Fresco, for pointing that out. Right, Dr. Clary, your hand is raised.
So I'd also like to address um Ms. DeValle's suggestion that we make a matrix. I think that would be the? Quickest way to uh kind of come to a consensus of who should be interviewed.
Uh Ms. Dryback, come on in if you can answer a question for me. When we used the matrix before, was it prior to or after the interview process?
Oh, the the matrix was used during the interview process.
During the interview.
Yeah, and so that was when people answered questions, then then we use a matrix.
Okay.
Because when we, when we? Because when we, when we used that matrix, it was for the board, it was for the health officer, and we had three candidates. So we, we didn't, we didn't narrow down that, that field.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McKinney, your hand is raised.
Uh, I'm wondering, since we're going to have a special meeting and because we're going to be reviewing applicants, that it also would be a good opportunity for Ryan to email the Board of, uh, the Health Board, uh, members', uh, previous matrix or, or, um, interview questions that were used, uh, for example, when, um, the last time we had at-large, um, members, so that we could, at that board meeting, um, you know, discuss the, the questions and the matrices.
That possible, Ms. Dryback?
Yes, yes, we're planning on using the same questions that we, that we used previously.
Great, thank you very much. We'll look forward to getting that from you then.
And then what, what, would the matrix be used to narrow down the field, or are we looking for a matrix for the actual interview questions?
Commissioner McKinney, what are you looking for?
Uh, well, ultimately, um, the way the V O C C draft ordinances that we'll be having a hearing is that the Health Board will present, um, a number of potential candidates for each position. So whether or not we're trying to come up with something that, if we're trying to go from now six down to a different number, if we are trying to, um, then that's something that we would need to discuss, um, at the next meeting.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, I'm sorry, um, Councilwoman Duvall, your hand is raised.
Um, I, I was hoping that we could maybe have a, like a scorecard ahead of time, whereas we can do our homework ahead of time and, and rank them based, like, rank them one, two, five, your top five applicants, and something like that. That way we can have an idea of who our top applicants are, um, and submit that to you ahead of time, and then have a separate matrix for the interview questions. Is that something that we could do?
Ms. Dryback, that's a question for you, but I'm wondering myself, before I have you respond, um, if we're going to do a matrix for the interview we've done previously, um, could we not simply as, um, Board of Health members reviewing the, or assessing the initial, uh, applications, make a decision on what our top five applicants are from those materials?
Is that a question for me?
Well, I'm just a question for the group.
Whatever.
Commissioner McKinney, your hand is raised.
Um, just a comment that I've not been involved in any process for interviewing, uh, but I can recall where you walked in with a preconceived idea of ranking before the in-person interview. Um, I've always reviewed, uh, various documentation that's been supplied by candidates. This is including job applications or candidates for scholarships. But the scoring is always done, and, and my experience, uh, in the actual, uh, in-person interview or immediately upon conclusion, when you go through and take your notes and do your ranking.
All right, thank you for that. Ms. Duvall, your hand is raised again.
I'm sorry, I didn't lower it.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I think what I hear you, uh, suggesting, Commissioner McKinney, is that we come to the meeting with, uh, not necessarily ranking, but just five or six choices.
I, I, I think our choices are our choices, however, however many there are. I'm just simply saying that when you walk into an interview process, you would have already reviewed the applicant's documentation supplied previously. Certainly, you might have some preconceived ideas, and it might inform what your follow-up questions might be. Uh, but, but ranking them ahead of time is not a common practice that I've taken part in. Uh, I think you sit down and you interview them, and then as soon as they walk out the door, you look at your notes and you finish your ranking, and then you move on to the next interview.
No, I understand what you're saying, uh, Commissioner McKinney. I'm just saying that rather than ranking, that we come into the meeting with, the five or six people that we would like to interview without ranking them, because we are, we are limited to a maximum of six, so we have to be able to do that.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I thought that was implied. Since the next meeting, that's what we'll be discussing. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, questions? So what I'm hearing is that the consensus says we would come to the meeting after having reviewed all of the applications with, uh, the names of, of five or six. If we can have six, I think we probably should come in with six names, uh, that we would like to interview. And then at the meeting, decide, um, what the final six are gonna be. Okay, in which case, we just simply need to pick a date, a day and a time. I'm, Dr. Clary, you just raised your hand.
I just want a clarification of when this next special meeting is gonna be?
That's right, we're at right now.
Okay.
All right, uh, so, any suggestions?
Um, Councilmember Byers, if I could, um, interject, because I'm looking at my schedule for next week, um, I've, uh, I probably only really have Tuesday or Wednesday evening open, because I've got a, a son graduation I need to attend later in the week, college graduation.
I don't have one of those evenings open, so it's gonna be difficult, I can tell.
So I, and so I guess, I guess what I'm gonna say also, I mean, I did vote in favor of the special meeting, but, uh, but I'll just say if it becomes too difficult to actually get everybody together on the same night, I'm also open to the idea of, of, of postponing, I, uh, I mean, I know that's the current plan, but if we need to, I'm willing to postpone that and just have that conversation at our next regular board meeting, too.
If we have that conversation, Mr. Ibach, at our next board meeting on the twenty-fifth, is that going to give us ample time to set up for, um, the interviews?
Um, the concern would be that that would give us two weeks, and I know that it's difficult to get all seven board members to, for, for up to twelve interviews. Um, that, that might be hard in a two-week period to do twelve interviews. So it, it is narrowing it down.
Councilmember Byers, I, I'd like to share something, but I'd like to, I'm happy to wait until, um, members of the board have spoken.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinney, your hand is raised.
Uh, just recalling, um, I believe that when we have determined in a meeting that we need to have another special meeting, that we typically relied on the exceptional staff at the Health District to send emails out to try, try and coordinate. Um, because of course, as was just found, us trying to do this in a meeting right now, we could be here for hours trying to figure it out. So I would just defer uh, to maybe leaving it up to staff to coordinate with us all to try to figure out when the most, uh, number of people can.
I would agree. Mr., Dr. McClary?
Um, I, I know I'm away next week and would, would not be at the meeting, and so, um, I would like the opportunity to contribute a list. And my question would be, do we, um, need to have a meeting, or can each member submit their list of six, uh, preferred interviewees for each position?
Mr. Elliott, go ahead, please.
I, I would weigh in on that and just say, I, I would be against that. Again, the layout here in subsection seven that we looked at is that the recruitment process shall be done in a manner consistent with R C W forty-two thirty. It doesn't say what part of the recruitment process. If you're deciding which people you're gonna narrow it down to, to interview, I would say that qualifies as the recruitment process. So any sort of submitted, um, emails in or other information, I, I would say that's taking action outside of the public, and I, I would say that's primary you want to stay away from. I, I guess.
If no, even if no action is taken until the entire group has submitted all of its, I mean, if we're reviewing these, we're doing action outside of a meeting, we're reviewing all the applications. If no, no action is taken by the board until all lists are obtained together, then that can be done in, in an open meeting.
So for example, his list could, Dr. Cleary's list could be read into the, into the notes of the meeting.
Oh, yeah, and no action would be taken until the, the numbers are compiled.
Well, your information would be placed into the board to consider at the meeting, but you wouldn't have a vote or a decision in terms of who the six people are. That, I mean, again, you're, you're adding your input. If the board would allow certain people under certain circumstances to offer information this way to be read, but you're not voting on any of the six interview people. You just say, here's, here's who I think. Um, you're kind of walking a, a fine line there, Dr. Cleary. That's kind of where I'm a little bit. Uh, to me, I, I, I think if we're gonna run into trouble of getting people together next week in order to do a special meeting, I think you've already got a meeting scheduled on the board for May twenty-fifth. It, it will put timelines a little tighter, understood. But I just want to stay away from this. Any calls into question whether or not we're doing this in consistent with forty-two thirty?
I would agree with that, Mr. Elliott, thank you. And so, um, as Commissioner McKinney, uh, suggested, uh, it may be easier if, instead of us trying to hammer it out tonight, if we allow the staff to establish, um, opportunities to interview and, and get response from the board.
Councilmember Byers, if I may, oh, James, did you have something to share?
Yeah, the, the only thing I'm gonna say there is, if we are gonna have an additional special meeting in between now and our normally scheduled meeting at the end of the month, m- my only point there is, keep in mind that you need to give proper notice to the public about this special meeting happening and exactly what it's going to be. So from a timing standpoint, that's always important to keep in mind, to notify the public, to give them, I, I can't remember the exact timeframes. I want to say it's seventy-two hours notice. I could be wrong on that. I don't think it would qualify as an emergency meeting. I think this would be a special one that you're adding on the board. I think it's seventy-two hours, Ryan. I may be wrong on that. We may have to look at it, but, um, that would be the only thing I would make sure everyone's, uh, paying attention to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Byers. I was gonna mention just that, that we have to give, um, ample notice for these meetings. Uh, so that's something that, that has to be, um, recorded. Uh, Victoria is very capable, and so she can send that information out in terms of when people are available, but in, with respect to people's timelines, uh, availability, and also the need, as James mentioned, to be, um, very clear with the public when we have these meetings. There is the potential to still have the meeting maybe on the Monday or Tuesday prior to our board meeting. I don't, um, suggest that lightly, because that is a great deal of work for our staff, but nonetheless, it's still an option if we are trying to, again, um, allow Ryan to create a timeline that, um, meets the deadline of July first.
Thank you, Mr. Fresco. Um, so I would, uh, I think we probably need to have a motion at this point in terms of we're gonna have a special meeting or not.
Looks like Ryan's hands up.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Dryback. I didn't see that.
So according to the R C W, twenty-four hours, um, notice to the public is required.
Okay.
On a special meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I, and I'm, I apologize, I can't remember whether it's twenty-four or seventy-two, so, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Thank you, Mr. Ibach, appreciate that. Is somebody willing to make a motion on to have or to not have a special meeting?
I think, didn't we already pass a motion for that?
No, not for a special meeting. We're just trying to decide if we're gonna do that.
The, so the motion that was passed was to have a special meeting next week.
Oh, I'm sorry. It did include the word special method. Okay, special meeting. Then we will, and perhaps we should leave it to the staff then to, um, coordinate at a day and a time. Will we have time to do that, Mr. Fresco?
I, I think we can certainly get that out, but I would like to clarify, if I'm not mistaken, that what was passed by the board was that we would have a special meeting next week. Uh, what we have to, I think the board has to decide is whether, uh, we choose to have a board, special board meeting next week, which may not um, align with everyone's schedules, or if, uh, the board wishes to have the flexibility to, to perhaps not have that meeting, as James indicated, or to have a special meeting that begins maybe on the twenty-third or the twenty-fourth of this month, but that's not, that does not meet the board's, um, agreement, which is next week. So I just want to clarify that we want to align and adhere to what the board is asking us to do.
Thank you. So we have, we have two choices here. We can either ask the staff to schedule, uh, for a special meeting next week, or if we, if there's a possibility that the board can agree to can, to have a special meeting on the twenty-third, we would need to amend the previous motion. Everybody checking?
Can we just make a, uh, can we make a motion or an amendment to change next week to, um, prior to the next meeting?
Yes, we can. Would you like to make that motion to amend?
Yes, please.
All right, so we have a motion by Dr. Clary to amend the previous, um, motion to state that we will have, simply have a special meeting prior to our next regular meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth.
Correct, thank you.
Second.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Dr. Clary and a second by, uh, Councilwoman Duvall to amend the motion to say that we will simply have, to simply say we will have a special meeting prior to our next regular scheduled meeting on May the twenty-fifth. All right. Um, do you wish, anyway, wish to address the motion, or should we take a vote? Sounds like we take a vote, Ms. Dryback.
Okay. If you're in favor of the motion, please, the amendment to the motion, please state yes. If not, please state no. Dr. Clary?
Yes.
Mr. McKinney?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Councilmember Duvall?
Yes.
Councilmember Byers?
Yes.
Five, zero.
All right, so the amendment passes five, zero. Would you read the amended motion, Ms. Dryback?
Okay, to have a special meeting prior to the next regular scheduled meeting to, uh, to interview six candidates, no, to interview a maximum of six candidates for each category and to enter, or I'm sorry, that was a different motion. So let me, let me, I'm mixing the two motions together. All right, to have a special meeting prior to the next regularly scheduled meeting to determine the number of applicants to interview and who to interview.
Great, thank you so much.
All right, would you may like to, to, um, address that, or can we just take a vote at this point?
Okay.
If nobody's speaking, we'll just take a vote, please.
Okay, so if you're in favor of now the, the motion, please state yes, if not, state no. Dr. Clary?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Councilmember Duvall?
Yes.
Councilmember Byers?
Yes, thank you. I think we have arrived for destination here. All right, so, Mr. Fresco, then, if you would, work with the staff, please, to, uh, try to get everybody on the same page, same time, same date, same place.
We appreciate. Thank you so much for the clarification. This helps us a great deal.
Oh, great. Okay, so are we ready to move on to item five B? Which is the Board of Health alignment of terms for citizen representation positions. Ms. Dryback?
Okay, um, so, Jocelyn, if you could put up the, the, the document. So, moving, moving forward with, once we get the board members in place, we will have different alignments. Um, right now, um, position number one, which is the position that Dr. Cleary holds, the term is, uh, is to end this December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Dr. Cleary did serve the, uh, the final three years of the term that Renee Boucher held after she had served one year of that term, because she moved out of, out of the county. Um, position number two is held by Dr. Adderbury. That term is set to end on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And then the new position, position three and position four, their terms would end six, four, after four years, would end June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six for both of those positions. So that would be middle of the year. So right now, in about two months, we're gonna have to start this process all over again with, uh, the position number one, Dr. Cleary's position, and also the two city representative terms that do expire at the end of this year also. So in, in order to try to get alignment, so whether we want to stagger, we want two, two citizen representatives to, to come to an end in twenty-twenty-four and two more at twenty-twenty-six, or Dr. Adderbury did make a recommendation, maybe we stagger, so we have one every year. How do we get them where they're aligned, um, so that, so that maybe we don't have mid-year people, people, or board members expiring mid-year and some at the end of the year, and then off, uh, raw years. So I've laid out four different options. Of course, there's, if you have any other options, any other ideas, um, you know, it'd be the time for discussion at this meeting, but I'll just go over the different options that we had. So if you want to stagger, where we have two in twenty-twenty-four, two in twenty-twenty-six, and then after the first terms, um, they would be four-year terms, but we might have to do a little bit of, of switching on the, the first, how many, how long the first terms are. So if we did two, two and two for the citizen position, position number one, the term would expire, um, at twenty-twenty-six, so we would, so at the end of this year. at twenty twenty six, so we would, so at the end of this year, we, we, we'd be advertising, the term, the term would start in twenty twenty, January first, twenty twenty three and expire on twenty twenty six. Position two would expire as normal in twenty twenty four, as scheduled. And then position number three, this would, where the change would be, the first term would be two and a half years. And then that term would expire twenty twenty four and be aligned with position number two. Position number four, the first term would be four and a half years and the term would expire December thirty first, twenty twenty six and would be aligned with position number one. Okay? Or option number two, we leave it as is and we have position number one, the term expires in twenty twenty six. Position, that's after we, we have a, we advertise for the, that position at the end of this year. Position number two expires December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And then positions number three and number four both expire mid-year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Now, if we want, if you want to go with a staggered one every year, a couple of different thoughts, um, where you'd have to start tweaking the terms that people are currently in to get it into that position where you get one every year. So position number one, you extend the term one extra year and it expired December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Position twenty two would expire as scheduled on December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Position three would be a three-year term for the first term and expired December thirty first, twenty twenty five, and position four would be a four-year term and expire December thirty first, twenty twenty six. Another option, if you want to stagger every year, would be, uh, position number two, the term expired one year early. So it'd be December twenty thirty first, twenty twenty three instead of twenty twenty four. Um, position number three would be a two and a half year term, expire in December of twenty twenty four. Position four would be a three and a half year term, which would be twenty twenty five, position one would be a four-year term and expires on December thirty first, twenty twenty six. So at, at this point, um, you know, we, we put four different options out there, but of course, if you have any other ideas, how we want to line up, um, if we're not interested in lining up, then option two would be your choice. If you want two and two, option number one, or if you want one every year, then three and four are, are different options to consider.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Lindy, your hand is raised.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Ryan, thanks for putting these options together for that, this is helpful to line these out. I, uh, for myself, I actually would prefer option number one, to be honest, I think it, uh, it kind of simplifies it, uh, we don't have to make too many changes, uh, and it, uh, we don't have to do an election every year for these, uh, for the citizen representatives. Anyway, that's, that's my thought.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindy, Dr. Clary.
You're muted, Dr. Clary.
Um, I definitely think option number one is the most efficient and it's what the board has been doing in the past. Um, my only question is whether, uh, four and a half year term or, uh, any term other than four years, um, is in alignment with, uh, our resolution, uh, and the new ordinance and whether any consideration for that has to be made.
Thank you, Dr. Clary, Mr. Elliott, can you address that, please?
In terms of the resolution, Dr. Clary, can you clarify what you mean? The, the current resolution of the Board of Health that's still on the books right now? Are you referring to the Board of County Commissioners, the new code that's going to be in effect? Which, which one are you talking about?
Either, I believe that the citizen positions are listed as four-year terms.
Yeah, I, um, in terms of how this can be done, the rules do allow the opportunity to identify an initial term that may be different. The county commissioners in their ordinance that was drafted, the, the new one that's coming out, it, it, and I saw the redline version of it just recently. Um, it simply says terms shall be staggered, the section related to how frequently, uh, they're sort of done, it is not, has been removed and says shall be for four years. However, the county commissioners do have the authority pursuant to the rules to identify what an initial term may be for anyone who's being appointed. So to the extent that there's a need to try and get things in alignment, uh, as long as the county commissioners are on board with this, there's a possibility to do something a little bit different here. So the main concern, Dr. Clary, in order to be consistent with the rules, is at a minimum, the initial term has to be comparable for a non-elected person compared to an elected person. So essentially what the rules say is there are provisions which are comparable to those of the elected members for appointment term, including initial term. So whoever you're putting on here in terms of the new citizen reps, as long as they have an initial term that is equal to two years or greater, you, you're still in compliance, I would say.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott, uh, Commissioner McKinney, your hand is raised.
I think, yes, I was going to speak in favor also of option one. Um, I'm definitely not in favor of cutting anyone's term, uh, short, which I believe was one of the options. Uh, I also think that we want to be respectful of board time and especially staff time, so staggering it every two years makes sense. Um, and then reference to the last part, um, that Dr. Clary just brought up and to address, um, Mr. Elliott's comment. I would just say that at the last work-study session of the county commissioners, which was a public meeting, uh, there was discussion on this topic because it was not addressed. Uh, and, uh, the public discussion was that there was going to be addressing that at a later date, really dependent upon how this, um, Board of Health was going to act to make, just to make sure that it was going to be in concert. Uh, because it's, it's all for, we're all trying to do the best to align.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinney, Mr. DeWolff, do you have anything you would like to add to the discussion?
No, I think I'm making consensus to everybody, I did like option one.
Yes. So, yeah, I am in favor of option one as well, because I think it's the most, um, respectful and efficient use of staff time uh, for arranging interviews and, and those kinds of things. And I think that doing it every theirs is just a better way to do it. Also, this seems to be the simplest approach in terms of getting things into the rotations that we want every two years, so. Commissioner McKinney?
Can I add one thing here, Councilon buyers?
Yes, please do.
So one thing I did want to ask, it, in, if this decision is being made, I want to ask, when we ran the advertisements, and I do not have them in front of me, unfortunately, I'm working from home and I forgot to bring them with me. When we ran the advertisements, either Victoria or Ryan, did we identify that the citizen representative positions would be four-year terms, or did we even identify that in the advertisement?
Yep, I'm pulling that up right now.
That's a good question.
Yep, and so, yes, we did not, uh, we did not list how long the terms were.
So, uh, one I would say is, as you go through the interview process, if you do make a decision on option number one, one thing to consider and I'd recommend to the board is that you identify which position is going to be which, and you identify these issues for the candidates when you're interviewing them, because someone may not want to take on a four and a half year term or et cetera, so it'd just be something, and, and by the way, I, I'm, from a legal standpoint, I'm fully in agreement with everything you all have said. In fact, I told Ryan, put option number one on there, because I think that's the one that makes the most sense. But if we do this, we need to make sure that in the discussion with the candidates during the interview process, that it's identified that if they're in position three or they're in position four, that the one they're interviewing for shall be either two and a half years or four and a half year, and inquire whether or not that would cause any concerns for them, so I just throw that out.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott, uh, Commissioner Lindy?
Yes, I would move to, uh, that we adopt option number one, uh, regarding, uh, the, the, the terms of our citizen representatives.
We have motion on the floor?
I will second, I do have another comment about what Mr. Elliott just said.
All right, well, you can do that during discussion if you would like, uh, so we have a motion and a second to, um, to move with option one for staggering the, uh, citizen representative terms. Commissioner Lindy, would you like to adjust your motion?
Uh, I don't think there's a need, I, I think I heard consensus during the conversation.
All right, thank you, Commissioner McKinney, go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, I was just going to say that, um, I, I believe, um, that that's absolutely accurate, that we need to, uh, tell everyone, you know, who potentially, if they would be okay for both options. And I'm just wondering though, if we need to determine after this vote, how we would choose who the candidate was for, for each one, or I, I guess that would be up to the commissioners at that point, is that, so just further discussion on that, but not related to this vote.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner McKinney, anybody else like to, um, speak to the motion? All right, Mr. Ibach, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Okay, your favor of the motion, please say yes, if not, say no, uh, Dr. Clary?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Councilmember buyer, or DeWolff?
Yes.
And Councilmember buyer?
Yes.
Five to zero.
All right, thank you, motion passes five to zero.
Councilmember buyers, may I recognize Ryan for his hard work putting this together? I, I thought, I thought when he first shared this with me, I was back in high school and there was going to be a test. But, uh, but it, it, uh, it really did take a lot of work behind the scenes for Ryan and James to come up with some solid options, so thank you.
Thank you for saying that, Mr. Fresco, and I was going to do the same thing, because I read through it a couple of times and I thought, I'm really dizzy. Great job, you guys, thank you so much. Uh, Commissioner McKinney, your hand is raised, do you have something else to say?
Yes, I, I think I just wanted to finish that thought, that, uh, if we're asking each candidate if they're willing to serve either position, it would be important for us just to indicate when we're already supplying that information to the commissioners to make a decision. Um, it would be two things, which, uh, which slot or slots position that they are eligible and that they indicated that they would be, um, that okay with serving in either position for those two terms, and we would just need to notify the commissioners, uh, what positions you're correlating to what term, first term, initial term.
All right, Mr. Elliott, can you address that a little bit?
Yeah, I, just sort of thinking through this, maybe the best way to do that is when we have the special meeting and you identify, um, the, the two six, uh, sets, the max six that you'll do for each position. It might make sense to identify whether you want position three to be the consumer of public health, whether you want position three to be the other stakeholder. And sort of make that decision probably in advance would make some sense, you make that decision, um, identify it, and then you're set sort of when you go into your interview process, so that you could let uh, the individuals that you're interviewing know how that position fits and how long it is, and, and it may raise an issue for someone. Someone may say, four and a half years is way too long, that's crazy, uh, and, and I'm out, or, or however it may be, so. Councilwoman DeWolff's laughing, because she's saying, this is a long time, but, uh, I, I, I think the key thing is, in, in a perfect world, I would tell you how this should have gone, and that is, um, to the extent that commissioners are adopting a resolution that they're, uh, discussing on the seventeenth, it, it, in a proper, probably the best possible world, they would have identified what the initial terms would be. So I guess my suggestion for the commissioners would be, to the extent that you have your meeting, uh, next Tuesday related to this, while your prepared resolution that you're going to be discussing doesn't have that in there, it's something to consider, so that ultimately this decision is one that should have been put together or, or part of the resolution or ordinance that gets passed, and the commissioners may have to do this after the fact, but I think it makes sense to have that discussion. While I'm not legal counsel for the BOCC, I would recommend having that discussion and sort of talking about that, and, and.
James, I'm so, James, I'm sorry to interrupt, but my, I, I lost you, I lost you for about twenty seconds there, so I don't know what you said. I know you're talking to us, but I didn't hear what you said.
Okay, I'm sorry, um, but my suggestion is when the county commissioners meet next Tuesday on the seventeenth, to have a discussion about the, uh, code that you're, uh, adopting resolution. I think there should be a discussion about that as the county commissioners. Unfortunately, your draft in its current form doesn't identify initial terms for either one of these positions, but I think it's worth having the discussion, uh, next Tuesday. Now, I'm not, I'm not your legal counsel, so I can't tell you exactly what you should do, but I think to the extent the intention by the rules, and it's, it's found sort of in, um, you don't have to pull it up, but two forty-six ninety oh one five, it says when the county commissioners create the resolution shall include the provisions which are comparable to electeds, including appointment term, including initial term. So I think to the extent the county commissioners are ultimately the ones who can set this, I think there's been some guidance here provided by the board, maybe how to do this, so.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott, Dr. Clary, your hand is raised.
I think it would make the most sense to assign the term to the position, either the, uh, stakeholder or, um, the, the other position prior to doing the interviews, because otherwise, um, then everybody's going to have to be offered a choice, uh, and the first person selects one choice, then we have to go back to the other position and run through everybody with the choice. If the positions are already set as the term, then the only people who would have, uh, a concern about choosing one versus the other would be those that are potential candidates for both positions, which may not even occur. And so it, it may streamline this to, to already have these terms assigned to one position versus another.
And, and I would agree with that, Dr. Clary, and I'd actually suggest that that would be part of your discussion or your decision in a sense, on the special meeting that you have, that you identify that there, prior to going into the interview process.
Would that be sufficient, Dr. Clary, to your thinking?
Yes, I think that'd be fine.
Right, thank you, Commissioner McKinney.
I was actually going to offer exactly what Dr. Clary offered, so I'm supportive of that. And then, uh, just to address, uh, Mr. Elliott's comments, uh, it will be discussed, it was raised, uh, as you noted, the redline version did not, uh, include that. Uh, and, uh, without going into it, we'll just say that it is going to be discussed, but there will be no action uh, without another redline version coming out at a later date required.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney.
And so, and so, I would say, I'm sorry, Councilon buyers, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, go ahead, please.
The only thing I would say to that is because it will not be a part of the final determination by the Board of County Commissioners, my suggestion is for this board, as long as the county commissioners would be in agreement with that, that this board would actually identify at the special meeting, which one of these positions is which, so that we can know in advance of doing the interviews. I mean, I, I would assume they'd be okay with that, but at least I think it makes sense to do that here at this meeting.
Well, uh, I, forgive me, Mr. Elliott, but you know my, my next statement is going to be that I can offer you no statements.
All right, thank you. So I do, I do not think that we need to have a motion on that, I think that was, understanding is that'll be covered at the special meeting. So appreciate everybody's contribution to the discussion. Um, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, the next thing on the agenda is to adjourn. Uh, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Lanning, and second by Commissioner McKinney to adjourn until our special meeting at the designated time. Do we have any objections to the motion? Hearing none, then we are adjourned, thank you everyone so much, have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.
A good evening, everyone.
All right.